Perfect evening.
Back into baking chair.
Yeah.
That's terrible when your body deserves you.
I know, and it does, yes.
That probably does.
Why does it use this waste?
We are good, okay. All right, the time is six thirty on July fifteenth. This is the select board meeting and will open as per usual with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll call it Dave, have a go in here, select points.
Marlo Harris.
You want me to do it later?
And so we'll go into our meeting rules and procedures. We stopped stating these for a while, had a couple of meetings that could have gone better. So we don't have a huge crowd, so we'll try to keep this to the usual. We try to follow classroom rules, so please raise your hand, wait to be called on, and don't interrupt other people. If that becomes a problem, we can move into something more formal and like two-minute statements and so on. Do we have announcements?
I just have, Old Home Day is August seventeenth, and the meeting that on August nineteenth, the select board meeting, will be held at the meeting house.
Any further? All right, moving on, that brings us to our public hearing. And so why don't you lay out exactly what we're talking about and then we can open it up for public comment.
Okay, we're talking about...
Okay, and if you didn't get them, these were sitting right on the table.
We're talking about seven lots that the town owns on Amherst Drive, which is not an actual street, it's a paper street. And all of those lots were taken throughout the years by the tax collector deed. So I guess that...
And we've gone through a couple of different things. We have had requests to discuss and then put them up and open for bidding. So this is part of that process. Beforehand, we did, I believe, request that they go through the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and others, even though that is not really required. What have we heard back from those?
We have not heard anything as far as from any of those boards against the sale of these lots.
Okay.
Before, we've done the policy that the town adopted for sale of lots in Pillsbury Lake District, a former bid that went out off the potential butters, which there are not many.
And so one of the things, I don't have the policy right in front of me, but one of the things that is important to note on the policy, the policy does have a specific prescribed way to normally do this in Pillsbury Lake, which would be to offer to a butters to add it and make one single parcel and piece of property if an abutter purchased it. In light of the types of properties and that they are all on an existing paper road, and that there has been desire expressed by some for development, we thought that it made sense to hold the public hearing before we decided how we wanted to go about this. Of note, in the policy, and towards the end, it does say that the select board can do something different if it's in the, they believe it to be in the best interest of the town, they just have to state exactly why in the minutes and so on. So rather than just make that decision, we wanted to hear from everybody and hold the public hearing. A couple of different options that we know about that could be on the table. One would be to do the normal policy, allow it to be put up for bid to a butters to be joined to their property without further subdivision. The second would be to decide that we would put it on to either an open bid or an open realtor market to allow it to get the kind of attention that would get, hopefully, the town a reasonable amount of money from those inclined in developing. Another option that I don't believe anybody's talked about is the different aspects of how it could be conserved. And the Conservation Commission has not been interested in trying to take and hold on to these lands to do conservation. However, this does also abut the preserve of the Pillsbury Lake Village District. And while they don't certainly have money to purchase the land, and that is something that if they were so inclined, they could decide to put towards...
Well, I should say, well, it really abuts the preserve because the lots behind it aren't developed. So for example, there's like another row of lots, but they're not developed because it's also a paper road.
Oh, I thought the one that was kind of directly up on our paper was the corner of theirs. Because I know several people have been saying that it abuts it. Because there's been concern that this, a sale of this would prevent access to it, which would certainly not be the case even if it were developed, because if it were developed, then the road would go up there and there would be access to it. In the same sort of manner that there should be today if someone walked down the undeveloped paper road.
But it's pretty much all undeveloped over there, right up to the preserve.
Yep. So it is these particular seven, they do all abut. And the total acreage, do you happen to remember?
It's about five acres.
Somewhere around five.
Five, yeah.
Five, give or take. And so that's what we are talking about today. We, of course, have not really discussed what we want to do with it, just that these are some of the possibilities. And if there are other possibilities that people are thinking of, we would certainly entertain hearing those as well. So with that, unless there's anything else I'm missing that the board or employees would like to cover, all right, let's open this up for public comment at six thirty-seven.
So...
Please just state your name and roughly like the street you're on.
I live on Thirteen Manchester, it's the corner of the road. That border, corner of Amherst and Manchester, Kevin Stanhope. So if you sell them, if someone wants to develop them, it's gonna, are you gonna like remaintain the road, like gravel road, pave the road or whatnot for access up there? If it becomes a real road again?
Gotcha.
Because I mean, it's a, you can drive it right now, but...
So, so the, any of those things, it is, it is a non-existent slash paper or discontinued type road, it is not actually the town's road, it's part of the subdivision, the original subdivision plans. So whoever would develop it would have to most likely bring it up to road standards before the town could even consider taking it. And before that, it would be a private road.
Doesn't the town have to vote on taking another road? I think they do.
Generally, yes.
Yeah, I think they usually do.
Yes. Name and location, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to go first, his hand was up before mine. Go ahead.
Who?
Oh.
Oh, you're, you're on.
You're up.
Oh, you wanna know who you are, where you come from? What's my shoe size? I'm Jennifer Buck, I live on Deer Meadow Road. And I'm assuming that there are no structures on any of these lots, is that correct?
That is my...
Yes, they're right on.
Yes, that is correct, yeah.
I also, I probably have this fault, but I was under the impression that you, that it can only be sold for the amount of money that they owe the town in taxes. Is that correct?
Sort of, but not true. So the only thing that the town can guarantee that it can get and keep is the amount that is from lost tax, uh, lost taxes and owed taxes. Anything above and beyond that, there are some court processes where sometimes we might get it back or get some of it.
If we don't, if the town doesn't get it back or some of it, where does it go?
Uh, that would be, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that would go to people, for example, that had the property taken from them. It would go back to them and/or their heirs. I guess I'll go.
Yes.
Pete Swoloski.
Uh, what's that?
Road.
Battle Street, nineteen eighteen. I own two lots on Amherst Drive, and I'm the one who probably started this whole process here. I'm looking to develop the road. And the reason why is, you know, basically affordability in the town of Webster. We are seeing, and as everybody can see, my little houses, we were building over in Pillsbury Lake, we were selling for two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars back in two thousand and nineteen. Covid hit, that same house without land cost three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to build my cost. We're seeing a real problem with raw land, raw goods in the town of Webster, which means it's, buildable lots are few and far between, our access to small acreage lots, which are cheaper, are non-existent. I think we changed some of the rules to less than five acres now. Are they still five acres?
Nine acres.
So, yeah, five acres, you're spending, if you get a decent piece of land, you're spending a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars before you even building a house, and that makes probably your house six hundred thousand dollars just moved to the great town of Webster, which to me isn't affordable. Seeing this as an opportunity, we have an existing asset, existing lots, a place where, you know, we can come in and build something that we call affordable nowadays. If we take, if we take that away and make it one lot, that takes an opportunity the town Webster has for growing families, elderly, more, you know, expanding our tax base, we're wiping it off the map. And we're not bringing it back. So having somebody come in, if it's not me, it's somebody else, to take advantage of this, following all the rules and regulations, maybe moving some lot lines to make them half-acre lots or something a little bit more responsible, to build something comfortable for people to be able to come into the town of Webster and afford. The road, you know, we talked about the road, the road would be a private road. It actually will have to be brought up to technically class five standards, which nothing Pillsbury Lake is right now, before the town would consider taking it over, but the town may not need to take it over. This would be up to these lots to take care of their own, own road.
Like in the winter time for plowing.
Exactly, exactly. There's many communities that have done that. If you look at the old King Ridge Mountain, that got, that went bankrupt, got sold off, subdivided, that's a private road, but this town of Sutton never took that over. And those folks pay for the maintenance, upkeep, paving, and everything on that road. And this would be the similar approach to that. So what, I know the policy, and a butter buys it, you merge all the lots. That, I think I said, I said it before, that goes away. That opportunity for affordability in Webster, you know, is gone, this is the last of it, essentially. And I don't see anything really on the horizon that's gonna, you can get twenty acres divided by, you know, into five acre lots, that's wonderful, it's great acreage, but it's not affordable for a small family with two kids. It really isn't.
So, so I'll get to you in one second. I do want to mention one thing, and also that it's not clear that we will figure that out and discuss it if this happened, but for example, the private road thing and the concept of, so they would take care of it instead of the town. It does actually lead to problems with emergency services being able to access during a storm, for example, if it hasn't been cleared yet because the residents haven't. And so there, in other circumstances, have been waivers that have been signed to say we're not going to get any emergency services, or it's a best effort, or, and it, it all eventually leads to bad. So the, all of that would get decided by the planning board in the way that it gets laid out, and then if that were allowed to then be offered to the town afterwards versus we'll approve this on the condition that the town approve it, approve taking the road once completed. So there's, there's a couple of different ways that can be done, so I don't want to get into the weeds and details of exactly how the road is maintained here, just to mention that there are different options and some pitfalls for them, but that's not a decision that we are making here at this board or...
No.
Yes?
Are you Granite State builders?
I'm Granite Roots.
Oh, Granite Roots builders?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because you have built other places on Pillsbury.
I have, yes.
And I love the idea that you're trying to gear towards more middle-income families who right now can't afford anything. I think that's great, and...
Thank you.
Yeah, really, really, I really do. But I'm, I'm wondering, is this how, this is gonna be, is this advertised somehow that these lots are going up to, for sale in a public venue of some sort, like a newspaper? The only reason I'm bringing this up is because we had such a discussion and mess with the Walker Pond Road deal, and we certainly don't want to repeat that. And do you see what I, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, so what we would most likely do is depending on the path that is decided to take, if, if the path were a butters emerging the lots, then typically what happens is we tell the butters, hey, you're in a butter of this, we're putting it open to bid for a butters, please get us your bid by X date, and there's no like pub, extra public notice or anything. If we make the decision to put it out to normal bid, there are basically three ways that that can happen. The typical bid process is we announce it, we put it on our website, we, we're putting it in the local paper, maybe one or two other papers. If desired, we certainly let other folks and/or realtors know that it's available. And then there's a bidding process, get us a sealed bid in an envelope by X date, then we open limit that date. And we've done that with several properties, including the one just up the street here on Battle Street. The, and one that was on the corner in Pillsbury Lake not that long ago as well. So that's another process that we can do. A process that is not typically our policy, but could be done, would also be to look for a realtor to put it on the market normally as developable land and try to go after developers. Generally, it's great, but then we're taking more time to do that as well as paying realtors to, to handle it for us. So those are a couple of the options. There's, there's no set in stone way that we have to do it, other than to make sure that if we are putting it out, it either follows our policy for a butters or is made publicly available and known to everybody.
You can do both. I mean, if one fails, you go to the next?
Oh, we certainly have those options, yes. There, there are some people here who have not commented yet, would you like to lay in on this at all? Yes, a name and location, please.
Diane Lopper, New Hampshire Drive. Very familiar with Granite Roots and what they do. We were a neighbor of actually. And I had some questions, though, about, a couple scenarios. One is, he already owns the land, so he isn't a butter, but if, he would have to consolidate that all into one parcel and could not subdivide after that, is that correct?
If, if the traditional Pillsbury Lake a butter only bidding, following the policy were taken, then that would be the case.
So that was one, because that, that would maybe solve some problems if you could subdivide it. And how much is buildable and can you move the lot lines in order to make that happen? You probably, does anybody know?
That's gonna be...
I know, he probably does, but...
That's gonna be a dicey part. So buildable, right now, the lots are grandfathered as Pillsbury Lake's lots. As for moving the lines to make them, the, the one thing that I've looked into when people have tried to do lot line adjustments or things in Pillsbury Lake is you generally try to make something that's already non-conforming, not more non-conforming. And I would have to ask the attorney or the planning commission on what the process would be to adjust the lines on those lots and what the boards would have to consider in order to get that done. Because it just hasn't happened like that in development in town. And for what Pete's planning to do, if that, the board does decide to move in that direction, I would expect we would be working with the planning commission on, with something of that size.
Yeah.
Because I, and the reason I'm here is because when I heard about it, it made sense to me, knowing that the intent, which I didn't know until you just spoke it, but that all those factors would be considered. Because we moved here eleven, twelve years ago, almost twelve years ago, and we absolutely love it. And we've watched the houses change, and now it's, we live in Pillsbury Lake, and it's a family. I mean, people are moving there with families. It's not the recreational area that, you know, a lot of the folks have known. And I do know that there was the discussion about access to the hunting preserve, and that seems to be, you know, very important to people and where that was. And just the sensitivity to that, where would that be? Would that be taken into consideration? Because I know that that was a concern, so...
Yeah, so, so the thing there is, anything that they concurrently do as access, this is a loop that goes around the properties we're talking about.
Yeah, we've walked that, so I just don't know where they are.
And so, so the loop portion, in order to access anything preserve, you would still be walking towards the outside of the loop, which is none of these lands. So the only thing that might happen as far as access to the preserve in this state would be that the road might be easier to walk down.
And if the road is private, that would be...
It'd still be a public way.
Yes, I knew you were gonna say.
Now, one of the things, one of the things based on, on your comments and that he brought up, is to make sure that people realize that these are grandfathered lots. So they are buildable, flat out, they're buildable.
Well, not without the road.
That, well, we have the road.
Once the roads built, yeah.
However, they still have to conform to things like setbacks, they still have to conform to things like making sure they're not building on wetlands. Many of these are small enough at the current time that they're probably not gonna put a well in septic and then a well in septic on the one next to it in any form of you can fit that here manner, even with the emergency stuff that's been going on in Pillsbury Lake currently. So there may be, well, every two of them can turn into one or something, but that's not something that we manage or change here with this decision, even if we put it up for sale. Other comments?
John Goodwin, New London Drive. Yeah, just to kind of shed some light on the hunting preserve access, the, the current access points are not on Pillsbury Lake property. So I think some people may have thought that it was kind of on the outer side, at the top of the curve, the properties ever for sale. But yeah, these, these don't look like they would prevent access. And then, yeah, I guess the main thing I was curious to see is, you know, how would we find out when these do go up for sale? If you have code access then?
So at, unless it is a butters only, we would at a very minimum, put out a notice and then have that front and center on our website with, this is when the time is, et cetera. And if there happens to be a paper that comes out near that time, then we put it in it. And we would, I would assume, because it's Pillsbury Lake, also reach out to the district to tell them, hey, this is happening, please mention it and announce it at your meetings. So those are the kinds of things. If it is something where we're looking for a larger development type input, so hopefully we get higher bids, then we may put it in something like the monitor as well. But that's to be determined, not guaranteed. But it will definitely be on our website, and I would certainly assume the new safety building sign, and hopefully the commission would decide to do something of, of the announcement as well.
I did notice that the, I think the town of Webster owns some properties on the other side of the road, above the, the large lot.
We do? We do?
Yeah. I was just surprised that I didn't see those for sale as well, but...
So part of the reason for, for that would be that these all being directly abutting can be joined and follow the joining procedure. And so knowing whether people want that versus want something else can help guide us towards what to do with those properties as well. But these specifically are all their own unit and are the ones that could be joined together as one property and sold off to an abutter. Whereas across the road is not something that would typically be joined that way.
Well, I also want to mention, sometimes the lots that the town owns don't go up for sale. For example, some lots Emmett uses to push snow back onto, so we don't want to get rid of those. Or they have another purpose, like there's a couple of lots in Pillsbury Lake that are owned, just in case we need a firehouse or like something in the future, they're set aside for that. So there are lots like that in the district.
Yeah, and I believe one is for if there needs to be pumping out of the wetland area, there's some that are just, it's overall wet, so there's no point in selling it or doing anything with it. So there are different reasons that it may not. Another one, which, which this would have taken care of if any of these were that, but another one is if it's a gift instead of taken for tax deed, and there are different processes that we have to follow, including public hearings like this. But none of these are...
None of them are.
Yeah, these have all been taken for tax deeds. So this is just because we want to know what the community wants us to do out of these kind of basic options that seem to all kind of make sense in one manner or another.
Can I ask something? Does the Pillsbury Lake community have a group that gets together at all? Like they, years ago, you used to have a very active group, but I don't hear too much anymore, so...
Yeah, so the HOA portion is gone, but there's the...
I'm sorry, what?
The HOA portion is gone.
There's no homeowners association.
But there's the, the village district and their commissioners that do get together to, mostly to operate the water system, but they're in charge of the, you know, the hunting preserve and all that as well.
Is that, can that hunting preserve ever be changed to make house lots? I don't know, because I, I know it's been there forever, so...
I can only, I can only...
I know, I've read about it. It would, it would take a vote at their meeting if they wanted to do anything with it, so their whole district.
Oh, so Pillsbury Lake could, and then it...
For example, there was a time where somebody was looking to develop it into a solar array like, I don't know if they ever contacted the commissioners, but they contacted me because they wanted to turn it into like a solar array, put a solar farm there. And I looked into it and I said, well, you have to contact the commissioners because they would have to do a vote to do that at their...
Yeah, at the Pillsbury Lake...
At their district meeting to do something like that.
Yes?
Another question, when you were talking about the other lots that are owned by the town that are not in these circles, are they the ones on the out, like here?
Some.
Some of them? Because doesn't that give us more opportunity in a later date, once the road's in, to be able to provide more affordable housing in more neighborhoods at some time, potentially? Oh, that's your...
That's a nice one, I like that.
Well, and some of them back there are private owners still too, so if the road got developed, they could build back there eventually as well.
So act, I'm sorry.
Yes?
You, you want Pillsbury Lake people that are here, opinion on which route you should take in, in selling the land, right?
Yes.
Okay. I, for one, think it ought to go, start out with the a butter having the first choice,
to be merged and, and not, not subdivided further.
Right. Right. So then, but as I understand it, it would be merged, but then he or she could.
You would have one, you'd have one large five acre lot.
And you can't subdivide it.
Unless they, unless, unless the board decides not to enforce that part of it.
No, I wanna, yeah, well, if he bought, if the, if.
That's part, so the, the, the policy was written that way specifically to try and not cram a lot more housing too close together in Pillsbury Lake.
Right.
And so the purpose of following the policy is to make it so that you're not subdividing and getting lots of extra housing. It's to make it all go into one lot. So you have one nice house lot that is more conforming to greater Webster zoning instead of just the minimal tiny plots that are within Pillsbury.
Yeah, I, this might sound silly, but if an abutter says, I want the lot next to me and buys that, then the lot next to that, he could then buy because he know butts that. And then the next lot, he could buy that because it know butts.
So that's, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, is we don't wanna hold like seven, eight, nine things when it's all gonna be the same abutter. And it would all be the same, joining into one, going into the same property over and over and over again. All it does is create more fees and more work. So if we want it to be that way, then we should join it all at the same time with the abutter that wins when we do that.
But the, the abutter who buys it buys it in one big lot and then cannot subdivide it back to what it was before.
They wouldn't be able to anyway, even if they bought it in chunks. Because it's bought to be merged with no future subdivision.
Okay, I get, I get you.
So e- either way, it would be that. And so this is, do we want to go down that route? Which is why it's typically then only open to abutters and they get a much better price typically, cause it's two, three people that bid. Versus opening it up because we do want it to turn into some form of development to provide more possible uh, housing to people. Yes?
So, so there wouldn't be an option for an abutter just to buy one of the properties? You're trying to do, do them all together?
Uh, at this point, that is what we've been considering. Yes?
Would it be prudent to have, um, Pete, tell us what he wants to do?
Well, he kind of has.
Last meeting too.
Oh, we weren't here, we didn't know. So that's why we're here today, because I'm like, this sounds really cool.
Let me try the really short version and you can correct me if I'm about too far off.
Thank you.
Basically, he wants to end up purchasing the land and turning it into roughly half acre lots. Uh, instead of, I think they're about a quarter acre or a little less than half an acre. But he wants to turn them into roughly half acre lots and develop it.
So, not, not the small quarter acre that we.
Double sized.
Right, so like the double lots that we know.
Some would be bigger than that because obviously how things were, but you know, one of these here, sorry Dave, it, I mean, that's wetlands, so. Yeah, it's, you gotta, you know, put that in conservation or whatever we're gonna have to do, so it's, it's, it's being responsible. And not meaning that you had somebody like.
But, but again, the, the, the intent is wonderful and that's the stated intent. And then what actually happens is what works with Pete and the planning board and the, the commission uh, in order to come up with something that can actually be done.
And lastly, um, can I speak again?
Or, or I shouldn't, sorry, I shouldn't say Pete, I should say whoever the developer is.
Yes, yes, the developer. Because of the situation with the water district and the water system, that will definitely come up. So how would that?
Would you do well?
You'd have to do well. That's why you're.
Right, so that, because that would be one of the things is.
Cause it's too far from the system.
Well, well, that, and this is how it's, sorry, cause we're getting off path a little bit, but um, it's just how the, the state of the system.
Yes, well, that, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, the state of the system isn't gonna support any, anything more.
Right.
It's, it's, in fact, I have a different opinion on that.
Yeah, but we're not gonna go there, cause that's a different meeting.
But, um, that, that's one of the reasons, to be careful development, responsible development. So you have a smaller septic system on there, probably two bedroom, you know, homes like we've been doing and a well so we can get the radiuses and, and distances we need.
That, that's, that was important, that was an important fact that would need to be shared. So.
There, I, I will clarify, there are ways to put additional development onto the water system, but that's between the developer and the village district, not us.
Right, right, exactly, but.
This is kind of for Pete and that is, you know, um.
So I.
Aren't you glad we're all here?
They can move on.
I'll let this, this one go, but uh, please keep it relevant to the types of decisions we're gonna make.
I am assuming that these lots, now that they're uh, half an acre, right, much bigger, that these people, people who might be interested in purchasing it would buy a two bedroom house, but then as they live there longer, they could add on?
That's up to the zoning and the requirements really of what the state.
That state?
Well, with septic system sizes and, and Webster is, is zoning, you know, you don't need, that's, that's a whole different.
So zoning is its own thing and what's allowed to be built. But the key would, so, I don't wanna turn this into a planning board meeting, but I'll, I'll give this small, small piece of it. You can't add a bedroom if your septic system is not sized large enough to support an additional person and bedroom. You can however, add a study or an office and then use it that way anyway, even if you're not supposed to. Uh, and there, it's really hard to stop that. So it's general, like in any subdivision planning, is if you think you're gonna allow that, if you think you're going down that route, you make sure that it has to be sized large enough to handle that ahead of time. But again, that's not this meeting or how we're sorting things out. That would be a planning board or regional commission type meeting and how the town would best handle this with pre-existing tiny lots that were supposed to be on the water system.
I understand.
Any further public comment on which direction we should go? Yes?
I, I mean, I, I do think, I mean, the, the development does sound, sound great and uh, you know, Granite Roots does, does do great work, you know, if they were to happen, they'd be the ones to get it. But I feel like it would be fair to notify the, the abutters more than just, I think, we only saw it as a post on Facebook about this meeting in the first place. So I'm assuming that's why the uh, the abutter that actually lives there uh, isn't here today.
Point taken, thank you. Any further comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion at seven oh eight. Can you tell us what the process, what the processes that you would follow would be? Since it sounds like people want this developed, but wanna make sure that all of the abutters definitely know.
We would send, what we've done with the butters is we haven't done across the street because that doesn't, you don't do that in the planning board, do you? No, but I think we certainly could, we certainly could put it out in a general area. I would look to the board to give me a kind of a guidance of how many feet you'd like to go. But that's certainly easy enough to do, we could.
My, my general feeling from what we've heard is that they all kind of hope that there's responsible development out of this. So we should go down a path to that sort of sale. Is that what you folks got? Do you have any further comments or other ideas on how to do that?
I mean, I would just follow the protocol of what we usually follow.
Yeah, I do think going across the street might be.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea because technically they are butters in a way, so.
Well, so there's, there's, if you're selling it to a butters, but then that requires merging.
Yeah, and that's the reason why we haven't.
And so personally, I think it would make sense to do our normal open process where we would post up to um, the website and perhaps one of the newspapers. But also that we should, should send a letter to each of the butters, including across the street butters, so that they're aware that this is happening for sure.
I think that's good to notify people, they shouldn't, people get mad when they don't know, you know, it's only a stamp or whatever it has to be.
And we're certainly trying to make everything is out in the open.
Right, exactly. So I'm, I'm for publicity, so.
Are you gonna do it?
Yeah, I think so. I'm trying, I'm trying.
So when you say newspaper, you're not taking the Concord Monitor?
Per- perhaps, that's a discussion we should, should have. I don't know if, I don't know if that makes sense or if some of the other municipal uh, lists that we have where the developers would look at it, for example, normal project bidding, if those might make more sense to say, hey, we have this open bid, you might wanna look at it. Cause it's certainly not every person that reads the Concord Monitor that would actually care that there's land to try and build on.
Right, I agree. And I'm trying to think of where that would be.
And the monitor isn't, I mean, it's not super expensive, but it's not cheap to put in there.
It's not inexpensive.
Yeah.
We can talk about that.
Okay.
I, I just, publicity's good. Wanting to get the top dollars, not a bad idea, but I do think there's a certain amount of criteria that you'd like them to meet.
So there is that, I think Mrs. Buck mentioned it. Once we can take what was owed for taxes, we can take the uh, interest that has accrued. We can take a small percentage for administrative work and for legal.
And lost taxes.
And, and lost taxes.
And if we do advertise it also.
Um, would have to go to the court to be, and then they would, they would uh, look for heirs or the person that lost it in the, in the first place. And that is quite expensive, as we've learned. So the person might end up with a dollar fifty-eight at, at the end of the day because it's, we're dealing with that now in another property.
So, again, it's not all about the money.
Right.
And I guess I'm not sure how you.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is this is not, I think the, the key is to get it back on the tax roll.
Yeah, well, get on the tax roll.
And naturally, we'd like to get the money that we've lost.
Right, right.
I do think the board could set the conditions of the sale and set what the requirements are for the developer as well for the development, because if you want specific things out of this, let's say you could set the terms.
I mean, I think everybody probably, I mean, well, that's what I'm hearing too out here, you know, I, I always think that everything's fair game in a sense, but there's also, you know.
Like any other proposal, you say you wanna develop it like this. Or submit your ideas.
And housing is such a problem.
Well, I think, I think what I, I think that's what I, I, again, if we're gonna listen to the public's opinion, they're, they're actually, which is quite unique, somewhat foreign. A lot of times it's the opposite. And by saying that, they're not, I hate to criteria people, but you know, somebody come out southern New Hampshire and, I don't know, do you know what I mean? You, you wanna kind of take care of your own by being, and being fair. And it's not into the fact of, we as of the board to whatever we decide, if I understand this all correctly, again, and we would wanna make it clear to the public, we're, it's not like we're costing them money by not doing the most prudent thing, which would be to try to keep our charm and the, and not have them, you know.
Well, so it really boils down to, do you wanna try to keep the charm and the larger lots and the natural land? Do you want to have some form of development, which they've mostly been and vapor up? And then if you do want some form of development, do you wanna try to spend upfront for like advertising and stuff of it, to try to get more money in that we may not be able to keep?
No.
And I think that's where, just doing it our normal way for what we've normally done, but not the Pillsbury Lake abutters, because it doesn't sound like people really wanna just have it permanently a, a large lot. That probably is the most sensible way to do it.
And do we put together a criteria or is that over our heads?
I think you wanna make sure that whoever the lots get sold to has the ability to actually develop them.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause if you're selling it to somebody who can't develop them, that's gonna be, for example, with the states dealing with, with that person who was gonna buy all that land and they found out later that this woman couldn't develop them, they didn't have the ability to do so.
Cause it's not cheap, none of that.
Cause it's not cheap and you don't want that to happen, so you wanna make sure whoever's approached to sell it, actually do it.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yep. So, so there could be like business sorts of things of that nature. Or, you know, you will get X number of houses and the road by a certain date. I don't know what, what that would be and what would be fair or reasonable, uh, so I'm not gonna try to come up with that now.
Okay, I know.
I can't, you tell me what's supposed to be.
I know, no, I'm just kidding. You're just usually good at that.
So, um, but that is a, definitely a reasonable, uh, good fallback to make sure that we're not gonna just sell it and then end up taking it back again.
I mean, the one thing, and there again, I believe in what's fair, but he did bring it to the table.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so that creates, yeah.
So, my suggestion, and please tell me if I'm off base here, it'd be for you to come back with that, our next meeting or so, what the uh, appropriate minimum bid would be for all of the various lots. So that we would sell them together as a whole, but not to be merged. So that we'd be, we'd market bid as a, like this is the whole group at this price. And it, would it be appropriate for the, for us to ask the planning board to come up with something to say? Or are we only talking about like what would be a reasonable amount of, of business back there and make sure it can happen?
We're getting to the point where you wanna do this as a development and see capable developers? I think we might wanna go to the commission with this.
To see what we, what we're able to put for a little, like, no, this is not gonna be allowed.
To put it all together and to pack it.
This is gonna be the requirement so that we know that you're able to do it.
Because I'm, I would assume that they've worked with this type of thing before in other towns and they would have the experience to help the planning board or the select board be able to put something like this together.
What I don't want to end up doing is what they're doing in the upper valley where the towns are actually doing the development themselves and then trying to sell the property.
I think it's always, I think it's always smart to phone a friend when you don't know everything, so.
Well, this ain't gonna work no millions of dollars.
Going to sell the lots.
Yes.
As the lots and not require them to be merged. You're gonna sell them all, all the lots, once we know how much money you're gonna decide how much to.
With appropriate feedback from, I guess, the commission as to what that should be to make sure that whoever wins the bid can develop.
Yeah, I'm assuming my, the planning commissioner will probably help us put something together to put up for the bidding process. I don't, I mean, you've probably dealt with this before, but I'm assuming something like that happens. Puts it all together with the conditions and the sale price and.
So should we make a motion on that now?
Well, the sale price is up to the select board.
Or should we make, wait, uh, until we have that to make the motion more specific to go, to put it up to bid?
Um, I, I think it would be good to know what you're talking about in money wise. I I think it would be good to know what you're talking about in money-wise, and take steps thoughtfully and and not try to do everything all at once.
Right.
What, you know, next meeting, why don't you let me come back with what the figures are, and then you can consider the next step.
Perfect.
Thank you all for coming to the public hearing. We do have further business, which you are more than welcome to stick around for, but that concludes that portion. So that moves us on to old business, the wonderfulness of the.
What was that battle on just because of?
You were gonna update them where you were in contacting Marty and.
Well, Marty's been contacted, that's spoken to Marty. I sent him the bids that we received, and he was going to get a meeting together.
I haven't heard about it.
He's not contacted us.
That's where it was.
Okay, so that's with that is, I certainly.
All of the quotes that you have are ones that you already had and presented to us.
Yes, yes.
So we're guessing, we're waiting for you guys to hold a meeting and make a recommendation at the energy committee?
Okay. I guess we'll wait for Marty to have a meeting. Are all of the quotes still good? Are any of them about to expire?
I think we'd have to really revisit that once you've got to look further along, because some of them are quite, are old now. And I don't remember seeing an expiration date on them, but things do change.
Right, the way prices are going and stuff could be anything.
So what is there for us to do, if anything?
I think we need to decide what method you want to pursue.
Well, so we could try to make a decision here, or it sounds like we're waiting for the energy committee to meet and give us that.
I thought the energy committee was going to talk about this.
Well, we did before, but then there wasn't a.
What hasn't been a meeting?
There wasn't a full consensus, because we were waiting on the unnamed solutions that weren't able to be provided.
Right, right. So, but if you had a, if you had something you'd like me to do, I certainly can, other than install a furnace.
When are you thinking that we are best equipped to be dealing with that for a schedule here for you and the hall?
Well, I think that naturally, the big concern is to make sure we have heat this winter.
Right.
That'd be helpful.
So, yeah, would be good, would make us happy. So I guess, I would like, you know, I think I'm looking for, is the heating suggestions that have been made sensible ones that would work? That I don't know. I don't know how that, that's not my thing. As far as updating the bid, if you decided that one bid, there's, there's a couple bids, one of them, I thought, looked pretty good. It's always more expensive than what you think. But if that were the one, we could pursue that further. I'm not looking for the energy committee to make a decision of which which one. I'm just looking for, yes, this system, we should really get more information on this and see how much it would cost now, when they could put it in, all of those types of questions. And it's been my experience lately that no matter who you want to come work for you, you always have to wait.
Yep.
If you're lucky.
If you're lucky.
To me, it would make sense, outside of waiting for the energy commission to make a recommendation, to ask the various quotes, A, if it's still accurate, and B, if we did accept their quote, how quickly they would start work.
Okay, I certainly can do that. I just didn't want to step on the toes of the energy committee.
Well, we haven't had a meeting in a couple of months.
You've got strong toes. Okay, good.
Do we want to set like a date where we're gonna have to move on it if the energy committee doesn't make their recommendation? I like worst-case scenarios, because we do need to get it before winter.
So in theory, the energy committee would normally meet somewhere there's a, I should be what this one, I think it's towards the beginning of the month. I don't see it in my.
I thought Marty told me something about Tuesday.
Yeah, that one was supposed to be.
What, this one? Tues, next Tuesday?
I could have misunderstood, but I thought he said Tuesday.
I thought he told me, I called and I thought he said, then we didn't have anything to discuss on the energy committee.
I spoke with him, I don't know when you called him, but I spoke with him a week ago, I believe.
Yeah, it was a long ago.
I thought I was talking about a week ago, too.
Was it five minutes before I talked to him?
Oh, no. Don't ask me. I think I called him because I wanted to know if we had an energy committee meeting, so it had to be right before.
Well, maybe somebody could just reach out to Mr. Marty and ask him.
I'd be glad to reach out, and I will go ahead and and check with the vendors.
Traditionally, it has been the second Wednesday of the month, but we haven't had any for quite a while. Other than the one where we discussed these last time. So. If that were still held true, then the meeting would be held at its normal time, probably after our meeting, first meeting of next month. And so it would be our second meeting of next month in the historic building, that we could make a decision.
Okay, so for the next meeting, I'll have what you just asked me to get.
Nothing personal, but I don't want to end up in December without it.
Oh, wow, wow, wow. I'll bring you in some sticks.
Some some candles?
Pardon me, sir, may I have another shovel of coal?
As my father would say, put a sweater on.
That works great until it doesn't.
I can remember my father having a fit about a twenty-seven-dollar oil bill.
I know. And and it was cold back then. We don't even get cold anymore.
All right.
We just get hot, right?
So that brings us to the new business scheduling joint meeting with Hockington to discuss transfer station permits. I think you already told.
Neil and I have scheduled that, and I wanted to know if August twelfth at five-thirty is, works for you.
August twelfth?
That's the second Monday of the month.
It's the Monday between our meetings.
Yes.
Okay, where are we gonna be there?
Hockington, in Hockington.
Which means it's at five-thirty instead of our time.
Right, we would be the first.
Now, to discuss permits, what are we, what portion of permits are we discussing? Are they wanting to discuss price? Are they wanting to discuss how future enforcement should be done and budgeted for? Are they wanting to discuss changing permits to a, like, we're gonna have the transfer station for stuff by doing permits all the time by month? What what are we talking about?
Well, I'm telling you just what I think, not what I know. As far as enforcement of permits, that's totally a different subject than what I know about. However, I think that it would be behooves both towns to update the permits, to have some sort of distinguished permit between Webster and Hockington, maybe one gets one shave and another gets another shave.
I think we currently do.
Oh, I didn't know that. Mary Welch had a few suggestions that she was gonna write to me, and I haven't gotten it yet, but the other thing that she mentioned to me in the ordinance, it mentions about the town clerk providing the police chiefs with a list of permit holders. Now, that's certainly good, however, I don't see, they could certainly contact the town clerk to get, to get that information. Also, I think that it's mentioned in the ordinance about a fee for the permit, and so that would be something that people, I think that they should be used for it, but I don't think they've been being charged for them.
Yeah, it's always been listed as a one-dollar fee.
A dollar or something.
Often not gotten charged.
Yeah.
And so now it's five dollars, and it's supposed to actually be.
How long is a permit good for? Is it a yearly permit that you need?
I think we talked about it.
You know?
I thought we talked about them. Oh, meeting.
We talked about a few different possibilities, but stated that, like, right now, we're only dealing with the fees.
I think what I would suggest to the boards, you need some sort of control.
Yeah.
And that's really what.
And we need to figure out where we're going instead of doing something that we're gonna just change again.
Yeah, right, something permanent.
Right, right. So that would be, I think, what you're focused on at your meeting.
Okay.
I may not be able to make it, I'm not sure yet.
What, the August twelfth?
Yeah. So we're coming back from a little trip.
Oh.
Well, to a construction show.
Well, we we need you, so you can tell them that the permit should be purple.
Please don't break up green.
To match the.
That they are, they actually voted to specifically not enforce green bags. So they have voted to say that we don't care about green bags.
Anyways, enough trash talk.
Oh, my God.
So that meeting is August twelfth at five-thirty.
Okay. And if Marlo can't make it, then we'll.
We'll surprise everybody and have her do everything the next week.
I'll provide you with a list of a few suggestions that we have, to kind of give you some thoughts.
That would be awesome, too, yeah.
And do we have correspondence?
Well, last meeting, you mentioned, we have, I have a couple things, you mentioned about putting a sign over at the park about swimming, being careful about swimming. Now, we have a sign over at the park that says, swim at your own risk. Did you want another sign closer to the water? This is on the post at the entrance to the parking lot.
Oh, I think that's fine. Yeah, I mean, you can, at least it says, swim at your own risk. They don't tell you that you're gonna post it, somebody said.
It's more from a liability perspective than a, because even if we put it, like, in the middle of the water on a post, someone's not gonna see it, so.
I'm, and I'm just, I, that's why, since there was a sign there, I didn't want to buy another one if you needed it.
Sounds good.
The Tax Collector is, has compiled a list of properties that are gonna be eligible for dating if taxes aren't paid.
Sorry, let me interrupt you for a second. Oh, well, we're on the topic of signs. It was also discussed that there was gonna be an outside group put together for dealing with the speeds and similar for the various roads that needed to be re.
You mean, the speed limit?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a.
Where is that?
We had left that with the police chief, the road agent, and I think that the members of the police chief, the road agent, maybe a member of the public. I have not heard that they've pulled that together yet.
Okay.
But I can certainly encourage them to.
Encourage them to, so that we can take care of that sooner rather than later.
Okay. What do we call that? Road?
Safety committee.
Safety committee?
I think it was the road safety, something.
Thank you, okay. So the Tax Collector has, I think most of these properties that she has are people that are gonna pay their taxes. This is a kind of an annual list. We have a property, well, it's not a property, it's down on the campground, and they owe us a thousand dollars. And we have written off a lot of taxes down at the campground because, well, frankly, sometimes it's just not worth pursuing. This trailer also has like a porch on it, and the man has not paid the taxes. The taxes are a thousand dollars. I was going to contact the attorney and see if this, we can't do it the normal way because we have no lien on things, but if we could go to small claims court or something like that, and depending on the cost, is it worth doing? So I thought I'd ask your opinion on that. I just hate to, my own personal opinion is that everybody else pays taxes.
Yeah, right, exactly.
That would certainly be the opinion that we should at least ask the attorney, does it make sense?
Okay, great, all right.
And it's there permanently all the time?
Yes, yes.
Well, they should pay then.
Yeah.
Right.
And Karen has spoken to him, but no.
He just wants to ignore the whole thing?
Yeah. Well, he's, I shouldn't say that, but maybe he's hoping it would be evaded.
Really?
And of course, the other problem is that next year, you're only putting it off for a year, because next year, we'd be in the same issue.
Yeah, exactly. Hey, everybody else has to do it, so they're paying their taxes and everything, so that's the way it is. Just move to a different town if you don't like it.
Well, it works the same in every town.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's true. You're right, you're not giving away anything, so.
You know, it's a.
Camp on his own property.
There you go, there you go. So those are the only correspondence I have, I had.
Is there an action for us with the deed list, or just to make us aware of, well, number?
Closer to the time that she's going to deed it, I will go over these properties with you to see if you know of any reason not to accept these. I don't know of any reason on any of these. And and several of them, again, are Pillsbury Lake lots. And I think what happened back in nineteen sixty-whatever is that they put out a bid event, and people wanted to invest in buying property. And then, as time goes on, it turns out, like we saw tonight, it never did come to fruition.
Well, there was no zoning then for this town either, so it was just a blank slate.
And many people from that time are no longer with us.
Yeah, right, exactly. That was before I even came here, so that was a long time ago.
So anyway, that's.
Do you think there's any public comment?
Uh, no. Chairs are speaking.
I know, you almost like.
Huh?
Maybe the spiders in the corner.
There's always some sort of comment.
That's right. And and the way they're different, the different colors, it's like a cartoon they're gonna talk to.
All right. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? I actually did not look at them much. Very briefly scanned them for topics.
They're very briefly brief. So I don't think they were that long, because it wasn't on a long meter.
Did you make any testimonials?
Oh, we, I probably did. Dave will catch it in about two seconds.
I can just start making a motion.
My my question would be, do we have the non-public minutes for it as well?
We don't.
Okay.
Do we have non-public today?
We don't.
Okay, good. I like that sign, that looks nice, the move of the sign by them.
Oh, I can tell you what it was about.
Right.
I remember. It took me a second, but I remember what it was, okay. I forgot we had it too, until Dave mentioned it.
Yeah, I didn't even think, sorry.
So.
See, all timers.
Because I left myself a note to make sure I mentioned it if you weren't there.
Make a motion to accept the minutes, the last time we were here, which is July first, two thousand twenty-four, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
These months go by, so it's already fifteen, the lie. I've I've missed, like.
Where did summer?
Well, right.
I hate this.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Hate this weather, though. Oh, God.
All right, so signing.
I do have some signing. This is the MS two thirty-two that you've already signed, but there was a correction that was made to that.
What changed?
When we did the portal, we eliminated one of the warrant articles, which isn't a good thing.
Oh.
Just one place to sign it?
Uh, just one, just one.
Just checking.
Yes.
I I thought I wrote it out.
Oh, see, we've got the purple pen.
Okay, that's fine.
We were just talking about purple.
Ah, that's right.
It must be good. This is a cemetery deed that needs to be signed. Well, it must be good. This is a cemetery deed that needs to be signed. Now, where did they sign this?
Uh, I put the dates in. You'll see dates with no signatures.
You gotta tussle across the room.
Okay.
Oh, no, I put their names in, but I didn't put the dates.
Okay.
So let me ask the dumb question again. The two hundred fifty dollars that gets paid for a cemetery plot, where does it go?
It goes into that trust fund that we can't use.
I thought she said, uh, I thought Brandon had told us that she didn't, directed people to not put it to there.
I don't think she has that option, but.
So I was right. I put the, I'll put the dates on that one. I typed in their names on this one. I probably should've typed in their names on those ones.
Okay.
But I, I know they always forget to put the dates in.
It sits there in the.
What was that? Are you trying to pick on me?
I'm, I'm definitely picking on you, Dee.
But I will check on that, however.
But you need to sign on the, I'll, I'll walk.
We, I'll handle that, would you?
These are land use change taxes. Our wonderful Mandy, I think it was Mandy.
Yeah.
We have three land use change taxes that are ready.
Really?
Okay, so.
One was for a building permit that was granted.
Oh, yeah.
And the other two are for lots that no longer qualify because they were sold to different owners and are now five acres. So they no longer qualify in their current use.
So that money at the end of the year gets transferred to the conservation committee?
Yep.
And I'll have to print your names in these ones because I typed it on that one like the smarter person.
Yes, you did.
But I didn't put the dates in.
Well, you can do that too. I won't do the date.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do those, it's fine. I'll go in and fix it. You were, I was thinking I was doing such a good job putting the data in.
I know, right?
Now, what's this thing? Oh, I have to sign this too.
Yeah, two for about five acre lots, the other one's for three acres.
So where are these?
Well, one's on Battle Street.
Okay.
One's on Pond Hill Road, and the other one's on Dustin Road.
Okay.
And we will be likely getting another one as well.
So they're changing this, so they're like selling land? Is that the idea?
So what happened is we had two subdivisions, and the lots that they subdivided off the larger parts was five acres. And they sold them to new owners, so they no longer qualify. You need ten acres to be current conservation.
That's right. At least ten acres, that's right.
So as.
Boy, you're a fool there, young man.
So as a vehicle first, when the changes made and the lot came into existence, it no longer qualified. And the other one was, they developed the lot for a building permit, so they're taking out their driveway and the building permit envelope out of current use, so that's where they're developing.
And they're, and we're sticking it.
Well, I mean, this, this is exactly what current use is for.
Dee, could you hand me that one?
Right.
They didn't pay, so now they're going to.
How'd you get there?
I'm not sure, but thank you. Then I have, um, visa bills again.
Ooh, goody bills.
The latest visa bills.
Right, I suppose.
The funds that I put for human services that was much more than we normally do will be receiving back next week.
Next week, perfect.
And this is my favorite bills, the electric bills, eighty-four dollars this month.
Damn it, you're charging us so much money.
Hmm.
How'd you give it down?
Well, that's the.
Solar.
That's from solar.
It's finally doing things the right ways and community better.
I still don't know how they get, yeah.
You know, it's interesting because, I shouldn't say, it should actually be more than we use though, especially now during the summer.
You mean the, you mean.
So we should be developing credits now?
Well, that's what I was just gonna ask you.
Unfortunately, we're cranking the central air really hard at Town Hall.
And we've left it on a few nights.
Yes, yeah.
At, at zero degrees.
And we left the door to the walk-in open.
Left the door to what?
The walk-in, the walk-in refrigerator.
It's actually not that bad at here.
Did you move a chair in there?
I'm like shocked. Why? At least you got downstairs.
Well, true, that's like. I love when people walk in and tell me, man, the central air is so nice.
The underground portion will always, will always aim to build it for fifty degrees.
Well, it's getting to the point where during the day it's starting to get about seventy degrees.
I mean, I realize, yeah, it's the humidity that's keeping you well, so you're stinking.
Usually about August, it'll start getting to seventy-four in here and then it'll go back down.
When you're, when you're in the, when you're in the ground, it's the same reason that you can use geothermal for like heat pumps.
Yep.
It, the ground tries to stay at about fifty degrees, so it helps you to not completely freeze in the winter, but it's a constant suck of the heat out of the building when you're trying to heat it and you're in the basement. Uh, but in the summer, it helps keep the place cool.
Yeah, it's amazing.
I will be out, as I mentioned in my email, starting Wednesday, go out next week. And that's the twenty-ninth. You're in good hands with Russ.
I like it up as big as good hands in the whole state.
Well, that was something else I had to.
I am available by phone if you, if I need it.
Like a good neighbor, Dana is there.
Yep. Oh, my gosh. Looking.
So you're doing a lot of fun things when you're out?
Seven forty-six.
So do we have anything further we need to do in the meeting?
No.
Alright, I would move that we close the meeting at seven forty-six.
Wow, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was my second guess was eight. Alright.
Cool. You're making a nice dinner when I left.
Who's me? Who was me?
Well, my, my son was cooking.
Wow, your son cooks?
Yes.
Holy mackerel. None of my kids cook.
Yeah, no, all of them. One's more gourmet like his dad.